If I may have your attention, it's seven o'clock and it's time to call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for August 7th to order. It is my privilege to welcome everyone here. I'm enthused when I see a crowd like we have tonight. I wished every meeting we had this many citizens to attend because the county business is very important business and there's important issues that we cover every time we meet. But I am very thankful for the crowd that we do have tonight. So, welcome, on behalf of the commissioners, I welcome you to our meeting. At this time, I would normally call on Commissioner McIntyre for the invocation, pledge of allegiance, but he is joining us by phone and I don't think he probably can do that. So, I'm going to ask another commissioner, one that would volunteer to take Gene's place, to please let me know who wants to do that. Okay, Commissioner Eifert.
Let us bow. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight thanking you again for this evening. We pray, Lord, you'll continue to bless this county and the people in it, Lord. We pray, Lord, that you'll give us strength and wisdom as we conduct the business of the county. We pray, Lord, for those who are sick and afflicted in our communities, just lift them up. Lord, we especially pray for our militaries and their families for the sacrifices they make that we can truly remain one nation under God. These things I ask in your precious name I pray. Amen. If y'all would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. We appreciate that. Commissioner McIntyre, I hope you can hear us okay?
I can hear you.
Okay. Would like for the other, all the commissioners to look at the agenda and I ask that we have a motion to approve or change.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We have to add the amendments to the consent agenda, the amended minutes to the consent agenda that are on.
I apologize, I missed the amended minutes. If you will, add the amended minutes to the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other questions, discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I believe, 100 percent. The first item on tonight's schedule is an item that gives me pleasure to do each time I get to do this. And I want to recognize one of our associates who is retiring and I'm going to ask Regina Farmer to please come forward. And as Regina's coming forward, I want to give everyone ideas of what she's meant to our library system. Regina's worked for the Stanley County Public Library for 20 years. She began as an outreach service assistant driving the library van to different branches to make deliveries three times a week. And she knew that those folks in those communities were waiting on those books and they were glad to see her pull up in the book mobiles, what I call it, book van. And she would drive into those towns and would meet those folks at the branches there. And she was real important not only delivering books, but a lot of the elderly shut-in patrons saw her coming or waited for her to visit with them. And that was probably as much more important than the books that you delivered. And I appreciate that kind of service, especially to our elderly in our community. Later she became, her skills and knowledge in the library system moved into a technical service department to be a processing specialist. She ordered, processed, and cataloged the books and other materials along with regular duties at the circulation desk. In the past year, she also took the initiative to start a monthly coloring program to help increase the library's door count and visibility in the community. And I'm going to ask a question of the audience here tonight. How many of you all, as adults, have colored? Raise your hand. Good gracious. That's a popular hobby, I guess. Maybe I can take it up someday, coloring. I'm sure it's relaxing. But Regina, I appreciate your service to the county, to the library, and we wish you much success and happiness on your retirement. We did have a small gift and we'd like to take, the commissioners would like to be with you to take our picture. You probably don't want us down there, but we're going to come anyway. Let's give her a round of applause. I don't know if I can, you and the audience, but every time I go to the library, I get in trouble because I like to talk and I've got to do that. Here's a little type of appreciation presented to Regina S. Farmer for faithful dedication service to the citizens of Stanley County on the occasion of your retirement. We extend sincere appreciation for your service and wish you ever greater achievements and awards in the future. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Someone have a camera. Everybody have a camera.
Stick your tongue out.
Where are we looking? There's Cameron Hall with the plate. If you have a family member you would like pictures made with.
My daughter's with me if she's willing.
Tell her to come over here. Are you willing, daughter? She is. Let's just bless you and your daughter. Is that okay? Okay, break up.
Thank you, Gene.
That's the fun part of the meeting. Okay, item number two, we have with us the owner of the Fork Farm and Stables, Mr. Jim And Jim's going to come and talk with us about the Fork Farm and Stables, the sporting clay events that are planned there, and the economic impact it has on Stanley County. Mr. Cogdall?
Mr. Chairman, I'll recognize Mr. Chris Lambert first.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I'm the Director of Tourism in Stanley County, the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the Fork Farm and Stables has been an integral part of tourism in Stanley County for a number of years. They have switched from the equestrian side of sporting to the shooting side of sporting. And with that, the transition has been very smooth. The fork has still brought a huge economic impact. The economic impact usually is anywhere from $2 to $3 million just due to events that are taking place there. As, as we all know, in the past, we've had the outdoor heritage days that brought in riders from all over the world, pretty much. And my job, I kind of sit around and try to think of ways for Stanley County to get out there to the public, or to get people interested into Stanley County. And Jim and the Fork Farm has done that tremendously because there's people all over the world that know where Norwood, North Carolina is, not just Alamo, not just Stanley County, but Norwood, North Carolina, because he has just a wonderful facility there. And switching from that, he's switched from the equestrian side to the shooting side. And this year, he had a wonderful event. It was a zone shoot, the state championship, championship, I can't talk, I apologize, zone shoot. That brought in about 300 people to the Fork Farm, to Stanley County, booked our hotels out, and it increased our occupancy rate about 7.5 percent for that. I'll be here probably in about two or three months showing you the state numbers from tourism in Stanley County. And you'll notice that we hit a record mark this year that we have never hit before. So, I'm very, very happy that the Fork Farm is in Stanley County and Jim has done a wonderful job. Austin Keiker is here with Mr. Cogdall. He is the Events Coordinator or Events Director. I messed it up, did I? Okay. He's the guy that does everything at the fork. So, I'd like to introduce them. They're going to talk a little bit about what the fork's doing now. And again, here's Mr. Austin Keiker and Mr. Jim Cogdall. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you. I'm going to start off and then let the younger man make some comments. I'm Jim Cogdall and I think I know everybody. Eaten lunch over here with my buddy, Mr. Andy along. Sorry that we don't have the flash drive. We got it, but y'all not right, see the photographs of what we got and what goes on at a recreation shoot. But we did provide, and I'm going to let Austin put these up here. Mr. Chairman, if you'll pass out some hats. Hope that's not illegal in ethics for me to give you a hat. As serious as we are and served in the Wildlife Commission so many years, I can appreciate the ethics part. Put those up there. Give them. And so, everybody can have a hat. If you can't, give it back to me or you can sell it. I'll make one little opening comment before I turn this over to Mr. Keiker. And I'm very fortunate to have Austin working with us, he's from Anson County, went to App State, lived in New York, et cetera. And he'll tell you a little more about it, but he handles all the incoming calls and handles all the events and books them and management, puts them in place. Eighteen years ago, this coming November, I stood before this body and announced what I was going to do. And we had to get some changes made in the documents because in that process, I started to make a donation of the property at that particular time to the foundation of Katabal Land Trust. So, as my guidance to the people that, I think it was Yowari Bank, but it was not Yowari Bank, it was one of the capital holding, Billy, I don't know which one it was that owned the. Yeah. And so, when I was able to negotiate two years with Roger Dick, it took a long time because he didn't know which pocket I was talking to, which pocket he was talking to. We came to terms to purchase the property and it was one dwelling on the property. And I still see a lot of people in Stanley County that have never been out to observe or been around to come look at the property. We'd like more and more people coming. So, the idea was kicking off this major event that Mr. Keiker's going to tell you about and the economic impact that Chris has talked about when he called. And I said, well, it's time to kind of tell Stanley County again that we're alive and well in the southern part of the county. One thing that we did observe today, and breaking a little bit into what Austin's going to talk about, we have, Canada and France are coming to our event along with the United States. And I'll let Austin go with the other states. You'd be surprised at the amount of people. We're just in North Carolina, only 137 of the 600 people of North Carolina and the rest of them across the country. And I want to thank you for allowing us to participate in this event by presentation. Chris mentioned that we have crossed over a little bit and have done away or not done away with on the equestrian. The equestrian event, I need to just get up to speed, is still in our licensed name and it's in Tryon, North Carolina. How many people, show of hands, Mr. Commissioners, know that the World Equestrian Games are coming to North Carolina the first time in the history? Thank you. Everybody's right on top of it. First time in history in North Carolina, second time the United States in history. And it was in Rolex about eight, nine years ago and I attended it. And the economic impact of that is $500 million. And 60,000 room nights and for a total of 17 days. And our event, the Fork from Norwood, North Carolina, is a signature qualifier, what we refer to as the test run for the three-day eventing side. There will be every discipline in the world, every equestrian discipline in the world, coming to North Carolina. And right now, you think the Masters are big, think NFL's big, you think the basketball's big, and all of the political issues around bringing equestrian to this country. And Orlando, Atlanta, going into Asheville created its own boarding and facility. Charlotte has created where horses are being shipped into North Carolina. The first time we were at horses shipped into the airports in North Carolina normally goes to Atlanta. And this heat it is right now, it's very difficult and some of the horses will be boarding and come into our farm to stay before they head up to compete. $500 million to the state. NFL hadn't done that, NBA has not done that. And 60,000 room nights, Asheville, Knoxville, Tennessee. The Charlotte market is absorbed already. The Atlanta market is absorbed. And these people will stay here for those days running all the equestrian. The fork is responsible for the signature of our license to allow the people in Tryon, the Mark Belissima who owns the Tryon, along with the Mercer family in Boston International Horse Center to achieve that. And they have 17,000 seating capacity stadium for this event. It is a major, those of you who have not been there, look at it. So, we're alive and well, Norwood is, but the license is up in Tryon. And I don't know what's going to happen after that, we'll just see. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Keiker to talk a little bit about the statistical detail and thank all of you for allowing me to be a member of your city, a member of your county, and be working with you over the years. Everyone, thank you very much. I'm going to let Mr. Keiker talk.
Hello, everyone. My name's Austin Keiker. As was previously mentioned by Mr. Lambert, I'm the Event Director at the Fork Farm and Stables. I appreciate you all allowing me to speak today and for your time. I come to you today to talk a little bit about the 2017 Southeast Regional, which is a championship series shooting event under the umbrella of the National Sporting Clay Association. So, the Southeast Regional will draw 600 shooters from all over the country to Norwood. Our southeast region is encompassed by North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Tennessee, Alabama, Jamaica, Puerto Rico. And the outreach is much greater than that. We have competitors from 36 states, Canada and France, that are going to be joining us in late September. Those dates are September 27th through October 1st. So, we're extremely honored and very fortunate to be, to be hosting this event. So, just a few stats for you. Each shooter will spend about $600 in entry fees. And then on top of that, they will of course need lodging, they will need to eat, they will of course be, besides the shooting, they will also be partaking in leisure activities around this county. So, with that, the Southeast Regional, as well as the North Carolina State Championship, I want to kind of reiterate this, we have generated about somewhere between $2 and $3 million of economic impact because of those events, which we are very proud of, of course. We at the fork will have over $315,000 in expenditures just for the Southeast Regional event. So, we're having to leverage that money before the event ever occurs. So, as you can imagine, that's quite a hit on our pocketbook that with all the other events that we've been saving up for and trying to get ready for this particular event. So, that, those expenditures and that, we are having to leverage that money from staffing, equipment rentals, getting ready to host the social gatherings for the event. So, there's been a lot of phone calls made and, and a lot of promises put out there for, for this event so that we can actually get the ball rolling in hopes of having a successful event. We will operate somewhere around 14 shooting events throughout the course of the Southeast Regional. A lot of those events will be occurring all at the same time. So, you can imagine the amount of staff I'll need. I'll need somewhere over 100 people between my course managers, the people who actually trap for the, for the shooters, the trap loaders, or in other words, individuals who load the sporting clay machines between the rounds of shooting and so forth. If you've never been a part of an event like this, you know, if you've never come out to either one of our events or another local organization that hosts sporting clay events, I invite you all, including everyone in the crowd today, to come join us. It's going to be really neat to see. You know, it's going to be similar, for the sporting clay world, it's similar to an NFL football game or a college playoff football game, something like that, you know, it's going to be a pretty big deal for us. It's one of the largest sporting clay events in the nation. In fact, there is five regions, so five regional shoots, and we are one of those regional shoots. Those are the second largest sporting clay events in the nation behind the U.S. Open. The U.S. Open draws about 1,300 shooters. Besides that, you have your regional events that draw somewhere between 400 and, you know, 500 competitors. We are on the upper tier of that by drawing, so fortunately, having drawn over 600 shooters for this event. All that said, I come to you today for a number of reasons. To inform you of the Southeast Regional is my key goal today. And secondarily, and most importantly to me, I would like to ask for your support. We would like to put signage up around the county, if that's possible, to inform the public of this event occurring, to invite people to come join us, to see, you know, what that's all about, to educate people about the sporting clay world and how much of an impact it has on us here at home. And I'd also like support from you all as ideas and ways to find personnel to help run this event. You don't necessarily have to have knowledge on the sporting clay world to be able to help me run this event smoothly. I need, I hate to put it this way, but I need bodies. I need people to help me, whether there's trapping for me, helping clean up around the farm to keep things looking pristine, and the list goes on. So, ideas and ways that we can work together as a team to bring personnel into the farm, you know, a lot of the jobs that we are providing, that we would like to fill, are paying jobs. The hours are, you know, long, but we do pay for the services of individuals coming to join us. And lastly, I'd like to ask, if possible, for monetary support from the county to help run this event. As I mentioned earlier, we're having to leverage, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars before the first person ever steps foot onto the property. So, any sort of monetary support that you all could provide or the county could provide would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have to say about the, the event today. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have come up during my little speech there. If not, I guess I will step down from the podium.
Thank you for the information, Mr. Keiker. I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Give me the dates of the event.
Yes, sir. They are September, Thursday, September 27th, excuse me, Wednesday, September 27th through Sunday, October 1st.
Does anyone have questions of Mr. Keiker or Mr. Cogdall?
I have one more thing to say, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We had all the rooms in Stanley County rented, I think Chris has gone.
That's correct, yes.
244 rooms, 245 rooms. We reserved 750 rooms for this event. And we had to reach all the way to Concord and Charlotte, Wagesboro and Monroe. And we've confiscated many houses on the lake that we possibly that will rent. The economic impact by the shooters, it took over two and a half years negotiating the right to bid for the event. So, we had to go through a bid process. Then we had to be approved by our delegates in our region. This is not something you just do for a dollar. And so, it's like Los Angeles, California saying they're getting ready to have the Olympics in '28. Well, this is, the next step for us would be to be able to have the U.S. Open here. I questioned if I don't have an economic pool of employee, past people that want to work, that understand the fundamental of the labor needs, it won't be possible. The same thing when we worked and did the horse event. It needed 360 employees to do the horse event, volunteers from A to Z in the question world. Mr. Chairman, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Some of the things that the county, the city of Norwood has done is give us water. Water is needed tremendously, bottles of water. We invite all the county commissioners to come to the Saturday night dinner. Let us know you're coming, bring your spouse, and you'll see some activities. Hope to have some keynote speakers to talk a little bit about the right of, right the Second Amendment, the NRA, et cetera. But also, we will probably introduce probably, I don't know, maybe y'all don't know where, that this is the fifth year in a row that Stanley County schooled Park Ridge, Greystone, North Stanley won the national event again. Well, they train at my facility, we donated the facility to them to train, and we are changing the rules and guided to where all the families now paid to go there, the shooters. They used to only could send one team. And now, you should be very, very proud in your county, in District 6 as well, to have a national champions. And you were with me, Mr. Chairman, when we introduced them to the Wildlife Federation in Raleigh the night when they took all the children to me. We are a believer in the fork at the farm, it must have children in the woods. They need to put down the crack bears, iPhones, flip phones, hearing aids, whatever it is, and go listen to everything else. If you saw a great rain bug and a good little whiskey or something, it's a great place to enjoy. But the children need to be out of where they are, into the woods, and understand our freedom that is existed. So, that's kind of my dedication. And by giving the land to the Katabal Land Trust, that is why the land will be left in preparatory for that. And I'm 76 years old. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Commissioners. Thank you. Any questions to me?
Any questions of Mr. Cogdall? Comment I'll make, and I'm, this is to everyone in this room, if you've never visited the Fork Farm and Stables, you don't know what you're missing out on. Mr. Cogdall and his folks have made that a pristine area and if you've never shot sporting clays at their facility, it's a lot of fun and I encourage anybody that can to go down and visit the Fork Farm and Stables. And I wish you much success, Mr. Cogdall, Mr. Keiker. And we're going to lean on Chris to try to help you get some signs put out around the county where zoning, where zoning will allow it. And I know in some of the towns and municipalities, they have zoning rules, but I would encourage Chris, you, and Mr. Keiker to meet with some mayors and see if you can't get a arrangement to put some signage out. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, item number three is the livestock arena fundraiser update and bid request. And the speaker for that will be Reggie Medlin. Mr. Medlin?
My name is Reggie Medlin. I'm a member of the Friends of the Aggricivics Center and a charter member of the Arena Committee and a proud citizen of the Porter community down in southern Stanley. We'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to provide an update on the arena project. First, we acknowledge and appreciate the commissioner's support of the arena project by your appropriation of $250,000 early on. That appropriation, along with the initial $250,000 that was pledged by the Stanley County Farm Bureau, has enabled us to move the project forward and gain steady momentum. In your packets tonight, you should see a copy of our case statement, project summary sheet, a spreadsheet showing the broad-based support from the community, and a rendering of the proposed facility. There's been some changes to the original rendering, but they did not increase the square footage or overall size of the building. And what I mean by that is, the rendering that you may see in your brochure shows a ticket and concession area on the end, and we have moved that to the side because of some consultation with our architect and thinking forward for the future about some additions that might be added to this down the road. So, we felt like, and site, the site look itself lends it to that. We're extremely proud of our donations and pledges from individuals and private sector businesses and organizations. The spreadsheet in your packet shows the commitment of the citizens and local businesses that have made to the project. We as a committee, and on that committee I would like to mention is Frank Simpson, Jim Cameron, Wayne Sasser, Curtis Fur, Lori Ivy, Samantha Foster, and myself. Those are the members of the Arena Committee and all but one of those that were there from its inception. We're extremely proud of our donations and pledges from individuals and private sector businesses and organizations. The spreadsheet in your packet shows the commitment of our citizens and local businesses. The spreadsheet in your packet shows the commitment of our citizens and local businesses have made to the project. We, as a committee, set ourselves a goal of selling a hundred memory boards. We call them memory boards or honor boards, as a means of raising funds for the project. And for the benefit of the audience, they will be similar to the ones that are in the Market Station Project downtown, and they're selling quite well, as you can see on your list. And in fact, there's a couple we can add to your list tonight that are not shown on there. So we're getting in memory board contributions weekly almost. The list of individuals that have donated twenty-five hundred dollars for these boards is proof we believe that the citizenry is solidly behind our efforts, and we thank each of them for their donations. We continue to publicize the project through word of mouth, social media, and printed materials. Our efforts are ongoing and will continue until the project comes to fruition. In addition to the cash donations and pledges, we have several businesses who have pledged in-kind donations that should lower the initial cost of the facility. These include connections to water and utility lines, materials for construction, and labor. We continue to seek in-kind donations as we move forward. An upcoming concert on August seventeenth will be a benefit event with a hundred percent of all proceeds going to the arena project. We're working hard to promote the concert, hope all of you will join us that evening to hear all the golden oldies, and I can tell from looking on the board that most of you know what I'm talking about.[693.32][693.32](Laughter) Because I'm probably the oldest person in the room. Well, maybe second to Mr. Cogdal, I believe I heard him say he's seventy-six. But they'll be performed by California Toe Jam, a band from Sebring, Florida, and these guys are good. The concert's being underwritten by Mr. Peter Ashudo, and we thank him for his generosity. We've also applied for some grant monies from several private and governmental organizations whom we expect to hear from in the next few weeks. In summary, we have a hundred and one thousand twenty-five dollars available in cash-in-hand donations, with a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars expected in multi-year pledges over the next five years. In addition, a recent appropriation by the North Carolina General Assembly of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars has put our donations in hand and pledges over the one million dollar mark, specifically to a total of a million twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. We're right proud of that. In conclusion, we're seeking the board approval for the following two things. We ask that the project be put out to bid, so that we will have a definitive value for the construction of the facility. This will aid us in ongoing fund solicitations. We seek the board's approval and agreement to provide bridge funding for the project to cover the gap between the immediately available donations and pledges and the formal bid costs, so a construction contract can be awarded and executed. It's our belief that seeing ground broken will aid our fundraising efforts and give confidence to the public that the project is a reality. It is our hope and belief that additional funds will be available from the grants we have applied for, and that these will offset the need for additional bridge funding that the board may appropriate for construction. There's been a recent increase in interest and inquiries from various groups in and out of Stanley County that lead us to believe that our facility will be very much in demand and utilized frequently. Our county is centrally located in the state, and no multi-use facility of this type, to our knowledge, exists in the trade area of the counties that border Stanley County. Knowing this, we look forward to working with the county to create an arena that not only serves the needs of the public, but also has an overall positive impact on our community. Thank you very much for your time and consideration of the arena project. If you have any questions, myself or one of my colleagues would be glad to try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Medlin, and at this time, I'm going to ask commissioners if you have questions of Mr. Medlin or anything to clarify on his request. Please speak up.
Mr. Chairman.
I just have one question. You said you have grants in the works. What's the total amount that you have possibly?
Grants in the works would total over three hundred thousand dollars at this point, one we're fairly confident of.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know this committee has worked hard for several years now, so I would like to make a motion that we put the arena project out to bid and also to provide the bridge fund gap to cover the construction costs while their fundraising efforts continue.
Second.
We had several seconds, so that's good.[908.32][908.32](Laughter) Three, all right. Well, I think I heard Commissioner Bertleson first, so we'll let him do the second. Any other comments, questions, before we offer a vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank the committee for their hard work on everything. I think you guys have done an awesome job.
Thank you very much, sir. It's been, it's been truly a group effort. Got a great bunch of folks to work with.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of putting, allowing this project be put out for bid and provide bridge funding for construction, please say aye. Any opposed? One hundred percent, Mr. Medlin?
Thank you very much.
Thank you and your associates that are here tonight. Thank you very much. Item number four, presenter, Clinton Swearingen, our tax administrator. I know everybody wants to hear about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board, and happy to be with you tonight. My purpose here is to give the tax collector annual settlement for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, which just ended on June thirtieth of this year. Pursuant to General Statute one oh five three seventy-three, the tax collector must present an annual settlement report to the governing board. That's why I'm here tonight. Now, you have a bunch of attachments with my agenda item tonight, and these reports provide an overview of collection activity for fiscal year sixteen seventeen. The real and personal property collection rate excluding registered motor vehicles was ninety-seven point two four percent. We exclude motor vehicles because our office doesn't actually collect for that anymore. It's done through a tax and tag program, NCBTS. My office still values all the cars and registered motor vehicles, and we still handle all the appeals, but we don't actually collect for it. But we have, this year ended with a ninety-seven point two four percent rate. That's an increase from the prior fiscal year fifteen sixteen of ninety-six point eight six. All the statutory remedies of garnishment, attachment, debt set off his sheet, and pre-foreclosure and foreclosure have been utilized to the fullest extent as possible. If you look at your handouts, the first sheet that you have is an analysis of the countywide levy. That sheet tells what the original levy was. It lists all the discoveries and the releases, and then it has the total, which shows the ninety-seven point two four. The next sheet that I have is the annual audit report. This is something that my office fills out every month. Andy gets a copy of it, Finance gets a copy of it, and it just is a way of double checking the other report, and you see it shows ninety-seven point two four as well. The third attachment is the delinquent collections. So not only is my office busy collecting the current fiscal year, but we're also busy trying to collect the other previous ten years that may still have taxes owed on it. And I say ten years because after the tenth year, statute limitations applies, and I can't enforce collection. If they want to come in and pay it, I'll gladly take it, but I can't make them pay it after ten years. The fourth sheet is three reports that we run out of our tax software that shows the balance that's unpaid, and you can see that it's seven hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-seven cent. To give you a little history, last year when I was here, that number was eight hundred and thirty-six thousand five fifty-two thirty-seven. So we've increased the collections by almost a hundred thousand from last year, in addition to the base growing, so we actually collected more money than we did last year, which is why the rate went up. The fifth attachment is an affidavit saying I've done everything in my power to collect as much as I possibly can. And the sixth attachment is the order directing the tax collector to collect the taxes charged for seventeen eighteen. So I'm here with the sixteen seventeen settlement, but the seventeen eighteen bills have already gone out, and we're already accepting the payments on those, and they're already coming in. So my request to the board is to accept and approve the annual settlement and charge the tax collector with collecting the fiscal year seventeen eighteen taxes. Before I let y'all do that and answer any questions, I do want to thank each member of my staff. I have fifteen employees that work for me and the tax assessor and the tax collector's office. This is all about collections, but before it can ever be collected, it has to be mapped, and then it has to be assessed. So I'm very proud of my staff for the work that they do. All these numbers are just Stanley County numbers. We also collect for fifteen fire districts and ten municipalities. So my staff is responsible for collecting almost forty million dollars a year and valuing four point seven billion dollars worth of real and personal property in the county. So I'm extremely proud of them. The ninety-seven point two four percent, I've been working for Stanley County for fifteen years in the tax office, I've never seen it that high. I've got a couple ladies in my office and the collector's office, one of them's been there for twenty-six years, she never remembers it this high. So I'm very proud of that, and it's for two reasons. The economy's improving, people's got more money, but the main reason is how hard my staff works, and I'm very proud of them. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swearingen?
Chairman, I just comment, thank you for all you do, and I know collecting is not an easy thing, but I appreciate all you do. Staff's always courteous anytime I'm around.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'm probably the only one up here that don't understand what these words mean, but as far as tax collection. When it's got discoveries and it's got addition, I know you add too, but explain to me what discoveries are.
Discoveries are when we find something that should have been taxed that wasn't. Then we discover them for that. So even though the bills have gone out now, if we realize, say, for example, business personal property, if there was a business operating in the county as of January first of seventeen, and they did not list their taxes, then we would discover them. Releases are for errors that are made. Perhaps a mobile home was taxed as personal property and real property, which happens commonly because they move around so much. So releases are mistakes that we find that perhaps my office has made, and we correct, and the discoveries are when we correct it the other way.
Good answer. I understand it now.
Okay.
As far as the sixty-eight thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars that I'm looking at, two thousand six, seven, it looks like we're going to write off. Are we taking judgments against those properties?
We, if we're foreclosing on the property, then we do file a judgment against it. And typically, that number, I'd have to go back and look last year, but typically, what we write off is above eighty thousand dollars. So sixty-eight thousand, I'm happy with that. A lot of that is also personal property that is hard to attach because, especially in that timeframe, we were still collecting on registered motor vehicles. And if the motor vehicle's been totaled or it's been sold, then it's hard to collect money on something that I can't levy against. But when we get to two thousand thirteen, when tax and tag started, so by two thousand twenty-three, I think you'll see that number continue to fall.
So you would say very little of the sixty-eights is real estate?
I can't tell you for sure, but I would definitely think personal property is more than the real estate is. And, you know, and if you look at it, I mean, ten years is a long time, but if you look at a levy that was twenty-five million dollars, and we've collected every dime of it except sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's almost a ninety-nine point nine percent collection rate, so.
I think y'all doing a great job. I'm just trying to
I understand.
Ask how we can collect as many tax dollars, because I pay mine, and I've got citizens that say they pay theirs, they want other people to pay theirs, so. And I appreciate what you and your staff, how hard you're working, ninety-seven point, what was it?
Two four.
Yeah, that's a great collection rate.
It's good for a small county. You'll get a lot of the larger counties that'll get close to ninety-eight or ninety-eight and a half, but ninety-seven point two four is above the state average, so.
Any other questions of Mr. Swearingen? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept and approve the annual settlement report and charge the tax collector with collecting the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Do we have a second? I'm going to pick Ashley. Thank you, Ashley, second. First and the second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries a hundred percent.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Clint. Okay, at this time, I want to recognize Michael Sandy, our planning director. We have some zoning requests and a recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners. Before you tonight is something that I take great pleasure in, is recognizing one of your employees when they receive a statewide award. I'd like to recognize Tim Swearingen and his wife, if they come up, please. Tim has worked for the zoning enforcement office for, since two thousand eight. In this role, he's been responsible for enforcement of all parts of the zoning and minimum housing ordinance. This includes fields inspections for new construction, inspection of properties for minimum housing code violations. The county contracts with five of the municipalities here in Stanley County, and he works closely with each of them to meet their enforcement needs for zoning and minimum housing. In addition, that's in addition to his county duties. He reviews plans and issue permits when not in the field, when he's in the office. Tim works well with the public, answering zoning and development questions. He effectively works with those of violations of the ordinances and is able to suggest reasonable solutions to issues that are found. He is a certified zoning officer with the NCAZO and a certified housing officer, and stays up to date with training and the latest zoning information. Having previously served as a pastor, Tim goes about his important work with a positive and caring attitude. He knows that when to be understanding and when to be firm. His sense of fairness and equity is always a guide for him, and it's a great example for others. Tim's dedication to effective planning and fair enforcement have been a great benefit to Stanley County citizens, and he is well-deserving and being recognized by the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials. That's the two thousand seventeen North Carolina Zoning Official of the Year. Mr. Josh Harold, which was on the awards committee for NCAZO, stated, the NCAZO, in their presentation, stated that Tim Swearingen exemplifies the qualities that it takes to be a successful zoning officer. Typically, zoning is a thankless job, and it takes someone special to perform at this level that Tim has. Tim's hard work and dedication are apparent from his coworkers, and he serves a vital role in numerous communities. That's Mr. Josh Harold. I'd like to show you his award.[1647.01][1647.01](Applause)
Jim, would you like to say anything?
I would like to thank the board, Mr. Chairman, for the decisions you make here. Not too often, believe, many months ago, we presented a couple of cases to you for approval of ordinances to carry on the enforcement activity, and you folks did that. And I'd just like to thank you for your support, for our department, and sometimes you have to make hard decisions too, and I appreciate it, really do. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do, and, Ms. Swearingen, we appreciate you allowing your husband to work and do his job.[1698.51][1698.51](Laughter) So thank you for being here to support him. Thank you. How comes the fun part, Mike?
That's right. Next item on the agenda, and I apologize for not having a PowerPoint. The computer didn't seem to be working in our favor tonight. Should be ZA seventeen oh three, John Mason, requests to add the following language to the zoning ordinance, section six eleven point one, uses that are permitted to add automobile, truck, and other vehicle sales, new and used. Mr. Mason requests uses permitted by right in the M-one zoning district, the ability of the property owner to sell automobiles, trucks, and other vehicles which are either new or used. This change would allow the sales of any type of vehicle, which is cars, trucks, boats, motorcycles, heavy equipment, tractors, travel trailers, and utility trailers, for example. Currently, the M-one zoning district allows for sale boats, but no other vehicles. While M-one is primarily a light manufacturing district, which is designed to accommodate industry's warehousing operation, which can be operated in a relatively clean and quiet manner, which is not to be obnoxious to the adjacent property owners. This use can be included in all repair shops, which are permitted, and businesses which manufacture other type of vehicles or equipment which to sell from their location. Mr. Mason currently restores motorcycles as a hobby and leases the property on Mission Church Road, which is already zoned M-one, and uses it for a machine shop. DMV requires that those who sell or buy DMV requires that those who sell five vehicles a year to hold a dealer's license and are required to maintain an office. Mr. Mason increases, as Mr. Mason increases his hobby, he will likely exceed the annual sales limit. He wishes to acquire a dealer's license and have an office building at that location with his machine shop. The amended ordinance will permit him to operate legally. NC DMV requires Planning Department to issue a letter certifying the same. The Planning Board reviewed the amendment at their July tenth meeting this year, and unanimously recommended approval for this text amendment. This may allow for some other areas of economic growth in M-one and M-two district. If Commissioners approve this rezoning, the state statutes now require a statement supporting the amendment. Staff suggests the following language be included in the motion for approval, that this amendment follows two thousand ten county land use plan by encouraging land use patterns that provide a compact mix of uses at a higher intensity of development. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to understand, this is a change to the zoning ordinance, not just a variance for this piece of property, single piece of property, correct?
That's correct, it will affect all the M-one-
Okay.
-and, in essence, M-two zoning districts to allow that use to be added.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Sandy?
Yes.
Just trying to get an idea, I don't know exactly how to frame this question, but a general idea of how many parcels of land would we have that are in the county that would be M-one?
That are zoned M-one currently?
Right.
Different parcels? Several hundred?
And there, some of those typically could be an acre or two acres in different areas.
And we have some that are hundred acres that are M-one.
Right.
Any other questions? Hearing no other questions, we need to have a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing is open. For anyone wishing to come and speak for, please come forward. Good evening, please state your name and make comments that you would like to make.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Mason, I'm the one that has requested this zoning change to the six eleven point one of the current M-one light industrial zoning district. Mr. Sandy covered a lot of the information I was going to speak about, but land use already allows us activities like automobile parking lots, automobile garages with open storage of dismantled, wrecked, inoperable, or unlicensed vehicles, boat work sales are already allowed, along with a variety of open storage industrial-type equipment and materials such as building materials, lumberyards, monuments, plumbing, electrical, and heating supplies. So, it's my opinion that automobile sales would be an appropriate fit within this type of RA zone district. Currently, automobile sales in Stanley County is only allowed in general business districts, and this will allow its citizens, business owners, and future business owners to explore the option to see if the M-one light industrial area would fit into their business plan, which could lead to extra economical growth within the community. My research shows that currently, most of the adjacent counties surrounding Stanley County allows this type of sales in their current light industrial zones. There would still be requirements to be met by the state for a sales lot, which is regulated, inspected annually, so to me, this is not going to affect, create an eyesore, or create any other hardship that's not already allowed in that zone. So, I ask for your careful consideration in this matter to approve this request and help keep Stanley County and its citizens one of the greatest counties to live and work in within North Carolina. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, does anyone have questions of Mr. Mason? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here to speak against this zoning change? Seeing no one come forward, I declare this public hearing closed, and I turn to the Board of Commissioners to see what you all would like to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'd just like to point out, Mr. Mason was working on boats and selling boats, he would already be permitted, and I don't see a problem why we shouldn't add this text to the M-one district.
Putting that in the form of a motion?
Well, I guess I'd give other members a chance to have some input, but I don't see any reason why we shouldn't.
Other comments from Commissioners?
If not, I'll do that in the form of a motion to add automobile, truck, and other vehicle sales, new and used, as a text amendment to the M-one light manufacturing district.
I think everyone heard the motion, do we have a second?
Chairman, I'd second that motion, sir.
Commissioner Rayford, seconded the motion. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of that language being added, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Okay, Mr. Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, next item is ZA seventeen oh four, Timothy B. Wilson and Mary E. Moses, request rezon approximately thirty thousand square foot lot on Airport Road from RA residential agricultural to M-one light industrial, tax record ninety-five sixty-five. Mr. Wilson and Ms. Moses request that the property located northeast of Airport Road, just south of this intersection with NC Highway seven forty in New London, or near New London, containing approximately thirty thousand square feet. Property is currently zoned RA. The lots immediately surrounding the property are RA, however, just to the north of the property is owned by Mr. Russell and Sons, which is zoned M-one light industrial, and the airport property, which is on M-two heavy industrial. Air National Guard Base and Almar correctional facility are nearby. The rear of the property backs at the proposed yet undeveloped residential subdivision. Four adjacent subdivision lots are owned by the applicants also. Mr. Wilson proposes using the property for a car sales lot. Currently, the M-one zoning district does not allow vehicle sales. This will change if requested from Mr. Mason's case, which you just heard and approved. This district is designed to accommodate industries and warehousing operations which can be operated in a relatively clean and quiet manner, which will not be obnoxious to the adjacent residential or business districts. This parcel is currently lightly wooded and has a homeowner which has burned approximately sixteen years ago. Property has been vacant since that time. Airport Road in this section was rerouted into the front of this property about ten years ago, and the property is within the airport protection zone, which places added restrictions on height. Public water is available nearby and would be served by septic system. Traffic on Airport Road in this area averages about seven hundred and twenty cars per day, according to NC DOT in two thousand thirteen. Property is located in a growth area per two thousand ten Stanley County Land Use Plan. If the Commissioners approve the rezoning, state statutes require a supporting statement. Staff suggests the following language be included in the motion for approval. The proposed location is in a growth area per two thousand ten land use plan, which also recommends to promote the economic development of Stanley County. The Planning Board forwarded this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for unanimous recommendation for approval. We're glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Sandy? Hearing none, I declare a public hearing open, is there anyone here to speak for this zoning change? Hey, good, how are you doing? Please state your name.
My name is Timothy Wilson. Basically, we're trying to get, we're already on the property, we're, we have a moving, like a transporting business, that we're needing a place to park our trailers and our trucks in the evening. Process, we're just going to buy a couple cars and store them and sell them, and that's basically all we're trying to do.
Any questions of Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilson, I read somewhere in here about a house that had burned down.
Yes.
Is that house going to be demolished?
It's already been demolished.
Already, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak against this zoning change? Seeing and hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Board's aware of the request, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I had one quick question for Mr. Sandy that's come up. Did we not zone a piece of property right there? Did we not rezone that about four months ago? Is it that GB property that's up the road?
It's on the next block, I think it's Martin Road.
Okay.
It's the next corner, yours is on two small parcels there on the corner.
Okay, that's my mistake, I appreciate the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, what would you like to do?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Burleson.
This parcel almost touches a parcel of land that is M-one, and it's in that area of, as Mr. Sandy said, so I don't see a problem with it, so I would move that we approve the zoning request, I believe it's RA currently, to M-one.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson, do we have a second? Commissioner Lauder, seconded the motion, any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Okay, item number six is the Health and Human Service Consolidation Discussion. Presenter is our county manager, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The board's had some conversations regarding the consolidation of human services, specifically public health and DSS, our social services here in Stanley County, into one consolidated agency. You had that, began that discussion at your strategic planning session in March, and then also had a discussion in one of the budget workshops in June. And I will say that the board's had that, not this specific board, but previous boards have had that discussion in the past about consolidation since two thousand twelve, when it was passed. The board was instructed to provide the proper public notice for a public hearing related to human services consolidation to be held this evening. Since that announcement that in mid-June, staff has met with both the Board of Health and the Board of Social Services to share information and address both questions and concerns. So, with that, I'll stop and answer any questions if you have any, but allow you to open up the public hearing.
Any board member have questions of County Manager Lucas? Hearing none, I declare a public hearing to be open, and I do have a list of people that would like to speak on the consolidation. I will call you by the names that are listed, and please come forward, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, because we do have a number of speakers. And the first person I'd like to recognize is Joan Udi, Ms. Udi?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I am a member-at-large on the Stanley County Board of Health, and this is my second term. I am a registered nurse for the last forty years, and also have my Masters of Science in Nursing and my PhD in Health Services Management, so I feel I come to the board and serve them with my experience. Based on what I have learned so far from the Stanley County website, I am opposed to the opposition of the Board of Health and the Department of Social Services being consolidated. We did vote on that at our last meeting. From the Board of Health perspective, you have a well-oiled machine in place, so why change just for the sake of changing? To date, there's no clear information that has been shared on your website as to what we would gain by going through this process, both short or long term. Given the very two, very different functions of the two departments, it's hard to see where there would be programmatic efficiencies from that consolidation. And I don't believe we have seen that there is a financial benefit to adding a consolidated Human Services Director. It would add costs, and it's unclear what the management structure would look like, or what the other costs would be associated with that change. Local government does not necessarily be, does not necessarily need to be bigger to be more efficient. There is concern about the productivity and effectiveness of a larger consolidated Human Services Board under option two, the option we have learned that you are leaning towards. These two departments have broad, complex responsibilities and operations that need dedicated board attention and time. Board management and functioning will be a challenge, and I believe it will be more difficult to find members to serve. The quasi-independent local boards of health with governance authority as currently structured and appointed by you have important value in promoting and protecting the health of the community. One of the most important features is that it focuses on community needs, public health data, and best practices that provide a reasonable buffer to balance political influence on public health decision-making. We have a good Board of Health that has served us well and has maintained an effective relationship with you, the Board of Commissioners and County Administration. I also understand that on the UNC School of Government website, that Amy Wall and her colleagues have been doing research on this since two thousand twelve, and are available to assist the Board of Commissioners as you go through this process. If you continue this consideration, I strongly encourage you to use this resource so the citizens of Stanley County are served in a standard that reflects your high commitment to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Udi. Larry Faulner?
Good evening, I'm Larry Faulner, I'm chairman of the Stanley County Board of Health. I've been on the Health Board for two nine-year periods, and the three-year period in between, I was kept informed of what was going on, so I'm well-informed and familiar with the Health Board and the Health Department. We have the best Health Department in the state. I have served with different Health Directors, and our present director is the best. The different departments of our Health Department are outstanding, environmental, home care, general health, and animal control, and our newest pediatric dental care is the best in the state. Our dentists put smiles on children that can't get this care anywhere else. Any disturbance or change will affect the whole Health Department. I can't speak for the DSS, I do not know any of these people. I just happened to met two of them tonight, but that's, as for cost, you won't save any money. A past county manager said he and others put numbers on paper, and it just didn't work out. You have people in our Health Department that are upset, things are going well right now, we don't need a change. We have recreditation coming up this fall, this means so much to our Health Department, so any change could mess this up. This accreditation and all tells us how good our Department, our Health Department is. Our folks work real hard to get this done. I feel the Board of Commissioners have not thought this through, I don't think you, the Board of County Commissioners, would want to take this job on. I sincerely don't think you want to take our job, I mean, seriously. If you just take care of the county business, I feel you will be looking after the county just fine. You already handle our budget, and you've done a fine job on that. We've just got, I'm sorry, that's, that's all I've got written down, and I'll just ramble on, so thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Robin Listerman? Robin Listerman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Robin Listerman, and I am the board member for the Stanley County Department of Services. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak on behalf of the DSS Board. While serving on the Board, I've had, I've been educated on the immensity in which the services at the agency impact this county. Annually, our services extend over 4,000 households and 10,000 individuals. When I took this appointment, I became an advocate for the agency, which is why I'm here tonight with a number of my board members. The Board, as well as myself, want nothing but the services received by Stanley County residents to be held no less than the standard than they currently are. Our fear is that consolidation may gravely interfere and affect these services. While I appreciate the Commissioners who have attended our board meetings, I was consistently left with unanswered questions. Where is the plan for consolidation? What would the organizational structure look like? When do you envision implementation? While I understand many of these questions may still be in a pre-planning process, they have provided a sense of uneasiness. Before you move forward with voting, I ask that you consider the following. One, the challenges that consolidation has presented to prior counties. Let's learn from others who have identified their obstacles and their challenges. Utilize the expertise of Amy Wall and the UNC Government School. Host small roundtable discussions with members of the agency to gather critical perspective on the development of a plan. Four, if the objective is to create uniformity among all county employees, is it best action to consolidate or to become substantially equivalent? As a resident of this county and a member of this Board, I cannot stress the importance of ensuring that a plan is in place. A plan provides protection for the unknowns. It provides reassurance for those responsible for implementing the plan have thoroughly examined all of the options. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to convey my thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Yao.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. As the chairman spoke, I am Amy Yao, and I'm the director of the Butterfly House Children's Advocacy Center. And I do want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you guys this evening and ladies regarding the consolidation of the Health Department and the Department of Social Services. Over the past thirteen years, I've worked very closely with both of these agencies. I'm very happy to say that the leadership with these two organizations is awesome, and I mean awesome. These agencies, the agencies under the current plan work very well together. They're very close in proximity, and they offer distinctly different services. I feel the leadership needed is individually to continue to provide the highest level of services and responsiveness that they each do. Here are a few of my concerns with the consolidation. As already been stated, we really don't know what this plan or explanation will look like for the reason to move forward. And doing a little research, it looks like there are three possible plans, and I know some of you are alluding towards two, but there's no explanation of really what plan that we are, you are thinking of pursuing. I stated in the SNAP earlier this year, I know Mr. Lucas had alluded that if you're doing this to save money, I'm afraid you'll be disappointed. So, you know, again, I ask, why are we planning on doing this since both of these are very well-oiled machines, and they are working very effectively and efficiently? In my position, I do work very closely with other Department of Social Services in our surrounding areas in the close proximity. And there's two particular ones that we work, I work with very closely. And since they have consolidated, the communication is lacking. It's hard to get anyone on the phone. Every time they show up with a referral, there's a different face that we do not know. So the turnover rates in these areas have skyrocketed for various different reasons. These jobs, the jobs these folks are doing is very hard, namely Child Protective Services, and that's who I work with very closely, as well as the nurse practitioner at the Health Department. They're not easy at all. It takes a lot of training, it takes a lot of experience, and it takes a really big heart. It is not a position that you want to have to keep replacing, and with all this turmoil, I have a feeling that that may happen. Let's make our county unique and let these folks know how valuable they are in protecting the children and applaud them instead of interjecting this needless change. It is my understanding that in the Child Protective Services Unit, the turnover rate has dropped from forty-seven, forty-one percent, excuse me, to seven percent. To me, that speaks volumes to the leadership we have within the Stanley County Department of Social Services. Lastly, if it's not working well, why try to change it? I've always been told the old adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." And working with Mr. Joyner and Ms. Shrinker both, as well as all their staff, the positive strides that have come out of both agencies over the past several years has had a huge impact on our community and our county. So why would anyone want to change it? I think the county would have a huge loss without either of them serving our community as the effective leaders that they are. As a child advocate in the community, it is our job, yes, mine and yours, and everyone in here, and our moral and ethical obligation to take care and protect the children and to be their voice. Most of you know that children is, the children here are my passion, and I will continue to be the voice for them as long as the good Lord above allows me to. So again, I just want you to think and pray hard about this decision as you go forward to make sure you're making the right choice for the children, not only the children, but everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yao. I'd like to recognize Martha Su-Hall.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, and to the board members from the Health Board and the DSS Board that are here. When I walked in, I did not expect to see this many people here, particularly those board members, and I'm glad that they are here. I appreciate the opportunity to leave council meeting and come here, but I'm going back, I promise. During my thirty years of working for the courts of North Carolina, I worked in five counties. For at the beginning of my career, back in the early 1980s, our judicial district was made up then of five counties. I worked with, within those five counties, many different disciplines, two of those which were the Board, the Health Departments, and DSS. So therefore, I worked with five of each. During my term and ended up in Union County, three years ago, we still, at that point, still had two different boards in Union County. These two departments, though both serving some of the same client citizens, have different responsibilities. They have a different service delivery. And yet, they have the same level of accountability, and that level is the appointed boards, which you as the Board of Commissioners appoint. Thus, if accountability, which I keep reading and hearing is an issue that you're trying to deal with, you have those two boards that you sitting appoint, so that should be your level of accountability. Back when the General Assembly, and I can't quote a year, but back when the General Assembly established these two separate boards years ago, that was the level of accountability. To determine what, who the board members were to be, from what disciplines, how long their terms would be, gave them an educational component to be able to question and understand what their responsibilities are. Allow them to know who they answer to, who they take information from, who they give information to, and what those communication roles are. The legislature before 2012 developed two separate boards and gave those specifics. Both boards, like I said earlier, are both boards are completely appointed by you. I would respectfully make these couple of comments. And I hate to quote what Amy just said, but if it ain't broke, my daddy used to say, "Don't mess with it, don't fix it." Just because thirty of the other counties in North Carolina are doing it, some smaller, I'm sure, some larger. Again, if there's an accountability issue, my suggestion would be, and I remember sitting right where you all were sitting, however, I was not like Jan or Jean. When I was a county commissioner, I was neither the DSS-appointed member of the Commissioners to those boards, as I understand Jan is to Health and Jean is to DSS. But I remember making those appointments. If there is an accountability issue, then I would urge you all to sit down as a board and as a DSS board with you all and talk, as a Board of Commissioners with the Health Department, and talk. And I think we all get into this mode of eat, burp, and leave. We need to do more than that. We need to truly have an understanding of what you all are expecting of this board or the Health Board, and what they understand their roles are to be. That level of accountability is there. From the folks that I believe, when I walked in and had looked over the group, from the folks that I believe sit on those two different boards who are here, you have a good group of well-educated, well-trained. But more importantly, I believe the folks that I have seen here tonight, knowing that they serve on one of those two boards, have a genuine interest in the health and well-being and safety not only of our children, but of our citizens, our complete citizens of Stanley County. Lastly, I would truly urge you, don't, don't jump. I heard Andy make, make the comment that you all talked about it a bit in March, and you talked about it a bit in June, and even far back as five years ago, which some of you were there here, and some were not five years ago, have talked about it. But I urge you, don't jump just because others are doing it. Please continue to take time to see up front, to see what needs to be tweaked in order to keep these two different boards. My last and final comment would be, two, and I, I, you know, stand to be corrected. Two boards, DSS and Health, of whatever number are on each, are going to be a heck of a lot better than a combined board of twenty or so or more trying to do the work that is the responsibility of both departments. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. I know how hard it is to sit in front of folks and make these decisions. I have spoken with just a few of you on this issue because I knew I was trying to get here tonight. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Barbara Whitley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I am Barbara Whitley, retired director of the Stanley County DSS. I began my DSS career in 1968 after I graduated from college. I retired September 30th, 2000, after nearly thirty-three years of service. The last fourteen of those years, I was the Stanley County Social Services Director. Next, I served twelve years as executive director for the Stanley County Partnership for Children, and I retired in 2014, again. I tell you all this to illustrate my commitment and passion for Stanley County and to demonstrate my depth of experience in the human services area right here in Stanley County. For the record, no one asked me to speak tonight. I have mostly stayed in the background regarding DSS matters since my retirement. This is the first time in seventeen years that I have felt strongly enough to step forward to express my concern and my worry about the proposal to consolidate DSS and public health. I will speak primarily about DSS because that's the system I know best. North Carolina has a locally administered, state-supervised, social services system. Many states are totally state-operated with no local input. Our system allows local administration of all various federal and state programs and involvement in each county. The state's role is to ensure compliance with the laws, federal laws, state laws, regulations of these programs that assist our needy and vulnerable citizens. This structure has been in place since the mid-1930s. Stanley County DSS has a long history of operating efficiently and effectively and as well as compliant. The Board of Social Services and the Board of Health are responsible for hiring their directors. The Office of State Personnel role is to make sure applicants being considered for hire are qualified for the position they are being considered. County government can assume that role by being approved as substantially equivalent and handling the qualification part of the hiring process. DSS and the Health Department employees are and have always been county employees subject to the same personnel policies and pay structure as all other county employees. For most positions at DSS, the state reimburses the county for part of the compensation, some up to seventy-five percent. I myself am a county employee, and as a retiree, receive a local government retirement benefit. My specific concerns are regarding the board's structure and the role in operations at DSS. The board is a five-member board. Two are appointed by the county Commissioners, you, and two by the State Social Services Commission, and four, the fourth member is appointed, excuse me, the fifth member is appointed by those other four members. All are staggering three-year terms with a maximum of two terms. They are responsible for selecting and supervising the director, who in turn hires the staff. Most often, the county manager is involved in the selection of the director when the need arises to hire a new director. I've heard that there are concerns about accountability. There is a mechanism already in place through the Social Services Board to address problems and issues with the director or the staff. It takes cooperation from the administration at DSS all the way to the county manager, county Commissioners, whether you keep the current structure or change it. The options I have seen in these proposals seem to attempt to fix a system that isn't functioning efficiently and with accountability. I believe our current system is efficient and accountable and isn't broken. And there are avenues in place already to address concerns. It is not necessary to derail the train to address the few concerns I have heard. I believe the School of Government will be a great resource for facts and unbiased information regarding the liabilities and expectations of changing the structure at DSS and public health. The areas I believe carry the greatest liability to DSS are child welfare, especially child abuse and neglect. Medicaid and WorkFirst have major ramifications if not managed correctly because areas, errors are costly. Child support enforcement is a huge service DSS handles that helps reduce the need for many social service programs. The staff at DSS has to have nerves of steel to handle a large volume of people every day and the constant changes in the programs. Even though it is often frustrating work, they work efficiently in spite of that and with compassion. It takes a strong, special person to work at DSS. Turnover can dramatically reduce efficiency. The DSS Board and the director have to hire the best employees and retain them. The current structure has done that very well. No hiring system is perfect and without flaws. But it should never be said that there is no need for improvements. Everyone strives to improve. I believe the consolidation would create more concerns than problems they would solve. The system is not broken. There are measures already in place to address issues that inevitably will arise. Efforts to support the hard-working work being done every day by the administration staff under the current system would serve our citizens, taxpayers, the best. I can't imagine that taxpayers would be interested in spending more dollars for a new system that would likely give no better results. Lastly, I believe that DSS and Health Boards serve as a buffer for you, our elected county Commissioners. You have many, many areas of responsibility and authority without adding another one directly on your shoulders. There are many liabilities that go along with the responsibilities of each agency. These boards are made up of local citizens, volunteers appointed by you. They are focused and interested in the specific areas each agency is responsible for administering. Who is in control should not be the issue. It should be, are the citizens being served adequately, appropriately, and cost-effectively as possible? And I believe they are. I respectfully request you to, as you deliberate on this consolidation effort, is that you do not consolidate. I believe the current system is effective and works well. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Whitley.
I'm Ms. Jordan. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. I'm a small business owner here in the community. I don't have a dog in this fight, like some do. I don't have any personal experience with DSS or Board of Health. I've never served on either one. And this came to my attention about a month and a half ago, and I started to delve into it a little bit. And I just looked for why. What's the point? And that led me to do the research. I pulled the government statutes that cover the CHASA, the Board of Health, the DSS. Nothing just seems to add up. Stanley County, to my knowledge, has not enlisted the UNC School of Governments as a resource to discuss this, to see what the benefits would be. I know, because I talked to Amy Wall the other day for about an hour, you know, and, and I said, "Well, as a, just a person that has to live here underneath these two boards or one consolidated board, what's the benefit?" Has anyone ever actually come back to UNC School of Government who put all this together and said, "This was a good idea"? Nope. It's never happened. Not one county in the state has ever done that. This, this policy became an option in March of 2012 when the governor changed the law. Since then, twenty-two counties have adopted- Since then, 22 counties have adopted it. That's 20 percent. One in five. Of the one in five, zero in five have ever turned in any information that says it's a good idea. There's no supporting documentation. I don't know who did it, well, I do know who did it, but an email was sent out by the Board of Health this week, going, hey, to the nurses who are, who work on the boards for all the counties that actually did do this change. They didn't want to go to the director of the Board of Health, or the DSS, or the CHSA, because that's probably a biased answer. They went to the nurses. Smart, actually. And I got to look at these answers tonight, and it was just real simple questions, you know? How has consolidation affected it? Have any cost savings been realized? Of the 20 people, seven responded, 86 percent said no. And the funny thing is, that number identically repeats itself again and again through 20 different people. How has the consolidation affected patient satisfaction, from the DSS side of things? 85 percent said it's either decreased or not at all. How has it affected efficiency in your departmental operation? 86 percent said it's either decreased or none at all. How has it affected community satisfaction? Again, 86 percent said it is either decreased or not at all. And how has consolidation affected staff's job satisfaction? 100 percent said it's decreased or not at all. I literally cannot find a single human being who has experience that says this is a good idea, that's ever done it. How big a board do we want to do? Option two, that you guys are examining, gives you the options to go from a 15-person board to a 25-person board. I have read what the DNC Statute 155-73A says that board has to be made of, and if this board is doing what I've been told it's been doing, it's leaning towards a slimmer board, which does make sense, because the bigger board, the more bureaucracy, I get that. But if you're going to slim the board down, what positions are you going to cut? That's not on the website. I mean, you're required to have a psychologist, pharmacist, engineer, dentist, optometrist, veterinarian, social worker, RN, general physician, psychiatrist, commissioner. There's eight more positions that you're supposed to have. What four do you want to cut? Nobody's said. The DSS, well, nobody has, and I've spoken to most of the commissioners, I've spoken to the county's offices, and almost all of the commissioners about this, in addition to Amy Wall and a lot of people throughout the county. Because I was trying to decide, is this truly a good idea, or a bad idea, or do I even care? And I read tonight, you know, the only thing I've heard is that there's an accountability issue. Okay. No one has said what it is out loud, and I'm not going to, because that's not my place. But it's been said, because I've heard it, and y'all have heard it. No one has an issue with the Board of Health. Zero. Haven't heard one. I grew up a child of divorced parents. I went through my fair share of DSS as a kid. I dealt with social services from about this tall, and a few of you remember the YouTube crap, so I've dealt with them since I've been this tall, too. I've never seen a DSA agency that didn't need some help somewhere. And accountability seems to be the issue with DSS, specifically its leadership and director. So I got thinking, well, let me look it up. North Carolina State and the federal government have both laid out the reasons why the Board of Commissioners doesn't have a role in hiring, or firing, or overseeing the director of DSS. That, I mean, there's an entire process for how that person is elected, appointed, can be hired, fired, terminated, reprimanded. So the only possible positive I can see from this, as just a layperson, is it brings the DSS director under control of the Board of Commissioners and the county manager's office, a position which the state of North Carolina specifically did not do when it set that position up. It said you shouldn't have that authority. Since 2012, one in five of you have done it statewide. But it's, nobody can prove it worked, ever. So these ladies said a lot of great things that I was going to say, but they beat me to it. They work here, and they have degrees, and I don't. So they probably make more sense than I would saying it. I hope you take it with more gravity, since it came from them. But I personally hope you'll both know, or if you do decide to go forward, that on the Stanley County website, you will list what you want to do. Hey, we're thinking about option two, not going to let us public sit here and think, well, it could be option one, it could be option two, it could be option three. We don't know. How big a board are you going to do? We don't know. Is it going to save money? We don't know. If you don't know, why do it? Let's just not do it yet. I mean, I'm not opposed to the idea, I suppose, if it were clearly laid out to us citizens, why we'd want to do it. But it's never saved money, it's never proved to be more efficient. I don't see the need. So I thank you all for your time very much, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Bernetta Mask.
Good evening, honorable chairperson, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bernetta Mask, and I am past, as of this past June, Chairperson of the Department of Social Services Board. The advantage I have right now of speaking last, my name was the last on the list, is that everybody else has already said what I wanted to say. But I do want to reiterate just a couple of things, and I want you to consider, please, that the majority of the people that are sitting out here tonight are against this, along with me. We are against this.[1025.01][1025.01][applause] I don't know who in here is for it, but I guarantee you, there is not as many as there are against it. I've heard, and you've heard, some of the reasons why maybe you should consider it. It's cost-effective, one of the things I heard, and, well, it improves accountability, one of the other things I heard of, and, but, to me, and to these people sitting out here, those are not enough to warrant what you might be considering, even under option two. It's just not worth it. As of our last meeting, we talked with Mr. Lawhorn, we've had talks with Mr. Lucas. The biggest point Mr. Lucas could explain to me was that we lose one position, we'd lose one director position, and that was supposed to save us a lot of money. It won't be worth it, for the headache that you're going to get, if this move is made trying to consolidate both of those boards. I don't want to get emotional about this, because it's easy for me, when I think about the hard work that these ladies do in the Department of Social Services. If you've never been to a meeting, you should come. You should come, and you should hear. And I'm only speaking for DSS, I'm not speaking for the Health Department. But if you've never been to a meeting, you should come, and you should hear the things that they go through in order to do their job. And even when they're doing their best, their hindrances that they have from upper-level state agencies, that they are not even able to complete their job, as they would like to, because of these hindrances. And to me, to consolidate it would only provide them with, is many more fast. You've all heard of NC fast. You've not seen anything by the time you hear NC slow, if you consolidate these two agencies. And that is really all I want to say. Everything else has been said. I just want you to consider the people you're talking about. Consider the jobs that they're doing. Please, please keep them at the top. They're working for you, and they're working for me, but we're all working for the same purpose, and that is to improve the lives of the people that we all work for, that we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mask. Give the opportunity for anyone else that would like to speak to come forward. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the merger? Please come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. And at this time, I ask the Board to discuss and consider what action you all would like
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for the county manager. Mr. Lucas, I heard the term substantially equivalent mentioned several times, and can you elaborate a little bit more on that? If we were possibly to consider just holding off on doing anything, and maybe went that route?
Substantial equivalency basically allows for, well, would require our personnel policies to essentially mirror the states in terms of performance, issues, progressive disciplinary, classification, pay, grades. All of our personnel policies have to mirror the states. That's how you get to substantially equivalent. So basically, we would have to be substantially equivalent to them. And so, all employees would become, would fall under the same personnel resolution. What it doesn't do is it doesn't address the issue that some of you all have raised of accountability. If you come to me and say, hey, well, I have this issue with social services, or I have this issue with health or animal control, I have to say, okay, that's fine, I can call the directors, but I don't have any control over the disciplinary action of those directors if you don't feel like there's a timely resolution to it, or that you don't feel like the customer service has been good, or whatever it may be. I don't, those folks don't report to me through, like the other 20-some department heads do. And so, I don't have any ability to address that and hold them accountable for those issues, like you all, some of you all would like, when the phone rings. So that's, so yes, it would make the employees consistent from a personnel perspective, but it doesn't address the issues. Those two boards still exist, Social Services and Health, and those are, they're still independent, essentially. I mean, you appoint folks to them. Certainly, you appoint all the folks to the Board of Health. You don't appoint all the folks to the Social Services Board. You just point two out of five. And so, you would have some consistency from employee, from the personnel resolution side, but you wouldn't, you still don't address the issue of that accountability to this board in a more significant way, by having directors report directly to me, which I report all directly to you all. So when your issues or concerns come up, and you want resolution, or you want there to be someone held accountable, again, I still won't, I won't have that, I still don't have that ability by statute. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, that's kind of, I guess, going to my next statement, that doesn't seem like that, going that route doesn't seem like that would address some of the concerns that I've heard from some of my fellow board members.
No, I don't believe it does, and it's very time-consuming. I mean, there's audits that are done, they come down and have to meet with employees, they come down and have to meet with our HR staff. It's a very time-consuming process. It's not just a matter of just submitting our personnel resolution, saying we want to be substantially equivalent. There's a whole process of state bureaucrats coming down and going through an audit process, and if there's, and I don't, I work with the state fairly closely on a lot of things, and there's nothing about them that's quick. And so, that process will take months, and it'll be time-consuming, and it'll eat up, it'll take away from the productivity of our staff to provide direct service, because we'll be tied up with this, and it's not going to address your concerns, the concerns of accountability.
And I guess, also, if we went that route, we would have to look at other employees to change those pay grades, and involve other people to make additional.
Potentially. Potentially.
Yes, sir. I can see some benefits. My main concerns are that we haven't heard from the other 30 counties. And I feel like that, you know, survey from us to the other 30 counties, their board chairs, and their county managers, a survey to find out, you know, what's good, what's bad, that kind of thing. Also, I just feel like that the Institute of Government has professionals that will come and sit down with us, and let us know all the pitfalls, all the good things. They do not try to sway you one way or another. But I just, I would hope that we could, to get some of this, and to get more research, and more information, that we could table this, because we don't have a plan. We don't know what organizational chart will look like, we don't know who will be the person that's to go between, between the director that's appointed, and to the staff. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I just think that, you know, it'd be better if we could table this issue until we can gather more information.
Thank you, Commissioner McIntyre. I think Commissioner Lauter wants to say a few words.
I just want to make one comment. 22 counties, 30 counties have some chosen consolidation. Well, I believe we're 100 counties. That means 70 have not. That means that since 2012, it has been an option for them. Why have they not? Have any of them gone through the Institute of Government and gotten some of the data? We're not hearing the results from the 30 counties. We've been told that over and over. If this county had done something that was so great, why wouldn't we be pounding on our chest and say, "Look at us, this worked"? Isn't it wonderful? And wouldn't we, out of the goodness of our heart, want other counties to follow our lead? Because their interest is serving their citizens. I don't know that we need to have any more discussion about it. I think for the time being, we just need to abandon this. And then we could move on with the county administration getting the data we need. It can be brought back up at another time, but until that information is here, I'm ready to just abandon it. And I would make the motion that staff can proceed with gathering information, but the Board of Commissioners does not approve the consolidation of the Department of Health and the Department of Social Services.
Question about the motion, you state that consolidation not, you want them to seek information, additional information, but... Additional information, but the consolidation not take place at this time, or for perpetuity?
We can bring it up at any time, after the data and information is gathered. I don't think that would happen overnight. We will have the privilege of scheduling it whenever we want it to come back up. But for the time being, what is proposed to us, we need to just turn it down.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd need some help, I guess, understanding the motion before us. My understanding, if something can be brought up, maybe we should consider tabling it. From my understanding, with the motion, we cannot bring it back up for a certain period of time, and I may also refer that question to the county attorney.
Let me respond. I will amend my motion that we do not consolidate the Department of Health and the Department of Social Services. of Social Services.
Commissioner McIntyre? Repeat, repeat your motion one more time, Commissioner Lauter.
I need a tape recorder. No, I'm saying...
No, you need a chairman that understands your motion.
I think you do, you're a fine job. That the Board of Commissioners does not approve the consolidation of the Department of Health and Department of Social Services, period.
Commissioner McIntyre, are you still seconding that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion that I hear is that Commissioner Lauter makes the motion that we table, or we do not, we do not approve the consolidation of the DSS or Health Department. And Commissioner McIntyre seconded that motion. Now, before we vote, I want discussion.
Mr. Chairman. I would respect my fellow commissioners wanting to maybe table this and get some more information. I would, I would actually probably maybe vote for that, but just putting this thing to bed permanently, I can't support that at this time. I would like to maybe address some of the concerns that were brought up to see if we can possibly answer some of those concerns and at least gain some information. And it may be at the end of the day, this board chooses not to do something, but I think while we're discussing, discussing this, we should certainly educate ourselves to the fullest extent and get all the research out there. So, I guess, I say all that to say I can't support the current motion that is before us, but if had the opportunity, I would be in favor of tabling it.
Any other discussion?
Yes. We did talk about this in March. We've talked about it again in the budget process. This is nothing new. It's not been on our agenda, meeting after meeting after meeting, but there's been a lot of discussion about it. We've had a lot of time. If one citizen from the public can devote as much time as they're saying they did, if the past experience of directors of the Department of Social Services can go into detail in talking about the compliance, where there would be things between the two boards that did overlap and some that would not, they would not blend, they would not mesh, I'll stand on my motion, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I've got a question. I know Mr. Lucas has spoke with a few other county managers who have gone through this process. I'd like the public to hear what he's talked with them about as well.
Yeah, I've had conversations or had the opportunity to hear presentations at conferences from counties. I've spoke personally with the county manager from Rockingham, the county manager from Montgomery, county manager from Richmond, and I had the opportunity to hear a presentation from, at that time, he was the county manager of Carteret County. I don't believe he's there any longer. But those conversations, the information I received, certainly there were, you know, bumps in the road as they went down the process, but there's nothing that I received from them that said, you shouldn't do this. There are, you know, they're, 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 they feel as though there was enough benefit to it, for whatever reason. And, you know, it's different in every county, you know? In our work, they say what's, what's good for one county is good for one county, because it's, it is vastly different across the state. But for whatever reason, in those counties, they felt as though the change they undertook to consolidate has been positive. Now, that's a county manager's perspective. That's not a DSS director's perspective or a health director's perspective. That is a county manager's perspective, which will likely be a little bit different than the DSS director or the health director's perspective, because their responsibility's different and their responsibility's more broad. And obviously, they are accountable to the county commissioners who ultimately made the decision. But yes, the positive, the feedback I've received has been overwhelmingly positive from, from those folks as to what's occurred.
Commissioner Lauter has something else to say?
And I respect what you've shared with us, and you've shared that with me individually before, but at the same time, you didn't have members of the boards. They were not there. Their perspective may be a little bit different. You also didn't have any clients there telling you what they had experienced. And as I said before, if it is great, then I think we ought to be reading about it, you know, from these 30 counties somewhere. And if you can find that, or they want to come here and they want to tell us how it's good for them, keep in mind, one size does not fit all. That's it.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't disagree with a lot that's been said tonight. My thing is, we have funding in place. We have passed our budget for this, for this year. Me personally would like some more information. I agree more with tabling it right now than doing away with it completely until I can get a few questions that I have, school of government, some other things, and reach out to maybe some of the county managers and health department folks. I'm not totally against the program either way, but I just can't make that decision tonight unless it would be to table. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And I understand what you're saying. I'm also concerned about the budget too, but this budget is good until next year, 2018. And that would, if your thinking is relating to the budget, that would be the more appropriate time. And there's nothing that's going to stop the conversation about a consolidation prior to it. We're going to be in our retreat next February, possibly bring it up again. But for this budget, I still say I'm totally opposed to the consolidation as presented.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just like, I mean, we've, we've thought about it at the retreat. You keep pushing stuff, keep down the road, and nothing gets done, you know? I'm not saying whether we should table it and look at more info, I'm, I'm against, like, just throwing this out. And then, we're going to be in the same ballpark next, come next year as we are right now. We just keep pushing the ball down the road, where if we bring it up now, if we go ahead and get information, whether it's from the school, bit, government, we can talk the different ones. And I think the, for these folks out here, if we sort of have a, I guess, a plan in place, I think talking with the majority of everyone up here, I think the majority of the folks, if we did go with this consolidation, would be the option two. So, if we can direct Mr. Lucas and them to start looking and talk with the school of government as far as plans for option two, and then get that, that way, people know kind of which way we're leaning, and they have an idea of what we're looking at.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This isn't kicking it down the road. I feel adamantly, others on the board feel adamantly, one way or another. I don't think any of us are just going to stop, you know? If this would pass, my motion would pass. You can talk to me about it after that. You can talk to me in the retreat next year. You can have the staff still be gathering the information and data you're saying you want. I have no objection to that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've been fairly quiet tonight, so I guess I'll fire the mic up. I've spoken with many of the members from DSS Board. I have not specifically heard concerns from Health Board members, other than what was said tonight. The concerns from DSS closely mirrored what the Health, Health Board said tonight, and Mr. Jordan, I know we had an email conversation, and I agree that there are some unanswered questions. I think that if we're going to move forward, I don't think we can abandon it at this point. I told every member that I spoke to on the DSS Board that my mind was not 100% made up. I've told them which way I was leaning, and that is with some kind of modification to the system, whether that be a merger consolidation or the new system, and forgive me, I forgot the correct word, the terminology, substantial equivalency, sorry. I think that to do away with it tonight is, is not necessarily an injustice. I think we have to do our due diligence on this because there are questions from the public. They don't see the, they don't, or we have not done a good job in relaying the benefits that we see of consolidation, or that several of us see as consolidation. And if we're going to give that a chance, I think killing this whole deal tonight and saying, oh, let's bring it up in February, I think that is kicking the can down the road. I would rather research it more next month, or research it the month after that, and even if I decide by November or December that I don't want to hear about it again, then we're done with it. But I would rather be done with it instead of kicking it out till February or something like that. As such, I will move to amend Commissioner Lauter's motion to table the discussion and potentially pick one of these options to be able to tell the general public and these boards the option that we, that we want to further research. Thank you.
Okay, help me, counselor, because my parliamentary procedure has run out. We've got a motion on the floor and a second, and I think we need to vote on that. Am I correct?
Thank you.
I understand that, but we've got a motion that Jan put on the table, and you seconded to not merge the two. Matthew Swain has made an amendment to the motion, but do we need to vote on the first motion? Jean, 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 I'm asking the counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that you have the option of amending the motion one additional time if Commissioner Lauter chooses to accept Commissioner Swain's proposed amendment. If she declines, I believe you would need to take a vote on the motion as it stands on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lauter?
No, I can count. I think I have the feeling, I know which way it's going, but I'm sitting here and I'm looking at the employees, the staff, the administration of two boards. I'm not trying to get anything kicked down the road. I think we need to put it to rest because these people and others, such as the Butterfly House, are interested in serving the citizens in the commitment with compassion and being focused. And so, I am not willing to amend my motion.
Okay, hearing that Commissioner Lauter's not willing to amend it, we need to vote on that motion that she and Commissioner McIntyre seconded. So, the motion is that we not consolidate the DSS or Health Departments, and that's it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. And Jean, if you, I don't, I can't see your hand, but you can say aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, that's two. All opposed to that motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that's five, five to two. So, that motion failed. Going back to Commissioner Swain, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to proceed with a research-based option, not to accept an option, but a research-based option for option two, as presented by the general statutes, and direct county staff to pull research together on that, develop a departmental structure, and bring this back at a later date.
Okay, we have a first and a second by Commissioner Morgan. Discussion.
I feel like for those in attendance, I think we need to fulfill our commitment and do our due diligence in this. And, you know, if this ends up being something that we decide is not right for our structure, then that will at least give boards in the future, you know, the research will be done and give them an opportunity to see maybe where, you know, we win and we're not successful at it. If our research concludes that it is the right thing, then our research will be done, and we will be able to give you more information as to how this structure would look and give you some sort of comfort level going forward. So, I certainly support the motion at hand.
Any other comments?
Well, I have a question, because I believe you referred to Plan Two, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And if you're going to do this, then I think the public and everybody else needs to have an understanding of why you chose Plan Two and why you're pursuing Plan Two rather than Plan One or Three.
Option One, the county manager just whispered in my ear, does not consolidate anything. And I, I didn't choose Option Three because that would put all of that responsibility and all of that, the, the very thing that these boards are trying to preserve on this seven-member board. That's why I didn't choose Option Three, and I made Option Two in the form of a motion because it created a board that would preserve some of those things that they are talking about preserving, that they want to preserve, albeit consolidated. But that is why I chose Option Two.
So, my next question is, is that then the consensus of the remaining board members, Option Two?
If they vote on it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to table it till we can have further study and analysis on Option Two, to decide at a later date, please say aye.
Aye.
You say aye, Jean?
Yes.
Okay. Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries six to one. Okay, before we move on to item number seven, I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And item number seven is a discussion of future road projects, strategic transportation investment, Commissioner Swain.
Mr. Chairman, this will be very brief. I just wanted to put this out for informational purposes. This is coming up for the next 10 years' worth of projects for the highways in Stanley County. And you can see on the P-5 draft project, the big sheet of paper that has the map on it, the green projects are those that have currently scored high enough to be submitted. I actually passed out a spreadsheet-type document prior to the meeting, starting, only 18 of these 32 projects can be submitted to the state for approval. Currently, Stanley County has nine in the top 18. There was some discussion at our last RPO meeting that the four, I'm sorry, the three items that you see on the list with stars, number two, number three, and number 17, there is some discussion that those items will be removed by the elected officials that are on the RPO, which includes us having one vote on that. And we were advised that those projects would just, probably were not ready and would not be ready in the next 10 years for expansion. The main point of this is just to advise you and provide information to the public that this, this information is in the form of a public hearing currently. If you go to the RPO's Rocky River Rule Planning Organizations website, there is a public comment. You can submit comments, anything like that on any of these listed projects, and we will take a vote on September 14th, I believe is the date, that the next meeting will take place, and that will be in Anson County. And we will vote on which 18 of these projects to send to the state for funding. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. That's very... That's very valuable information, and we need to stay on road improvements and construction locally as much as we can, and I appreciate you bringing that to our board and to our attention. At this time, it is item 8A, Stanley County Board of Commissioners, Central Line of Workforce Development Board Appointment. Presenters, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the members of this board that represents the private sector, has, she's been reassigned by Michelin. And so she has recommended a replacement, Monica Johnson, to take her place on the board from Michelin. And so that is the information and request before you this evening, is to replace the individual who is no longer residing in Stanley County or working at Michelin with Ms. Monica Johnson on the Central Line of Workforce Development Board.
You heard County Manager Lucas, the recommendation for board appointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Move to accept the Central Line of Workforce Development Board's recommendation.
Okay, second by Commissioner Lauter. Any other discussion? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 8B, there's a new House Bill 151 that's signed into law that a new EDC board needs to be appointed, consistent with the provisions of the law. I believe the provisions of the law states that two board members from each voting district would be appointed, one for a one-year term, one for a two-year term. There's five voting districts, one through five, and there's also two county commissioners that would be placed on the EDC board pertaining to this House Bill 151. As chairman, I would ask that as we present these, that we do them each one by districts, and getting through all of District 1 through 5. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've actually got a list. I went through and looked at all of them. I've got a list put together. So I would do this in the form of a motion. For District 1, for a two-year term, I have Mr. Rick Williams. For a one-year term, I have Mr. Larry Balkum. For District 2, for a two-year term, I have Mr. Steve Bradley. For a one-year term, I have Mr. Mike Leighton. District 3, I have Mr. Wes Morgan. For a two-year term, for a one-year term, I have Mr. Wayne Sasser. District 4, I have, for a two-year term, Mr. Greg Underwood. For a one-year term, Mr. Charles Brown. District 5, I have, for a two-year term, Mr. Ryan McIntyre. And a one-year term, Ms. Cindy Bean. And to reappoint our current two commissioners, Commissioner Lauter and Commissioner Lawhan.
Did I hear someone? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations for those same districts?
I would, I would like to see us do that. Yeah, suggested.
Well, let's vote on the motion that Joseph has, first of all, because if we're gonna do it one district at a time, we need to vote on his motion. Y'all okay with that? All right, all in favor of the board appointments that Commissioner Burleson gave, please say aye. Sounds like three, all against it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion fails. And now do we have a motion, a different motion?
Yes, I would make a motion, District 1, Larry Balkum, to serve a two-year term, and Rick Williams, a one-year term. You want me to go on, or just stop?
Now stop right there. All right, Larry Balkum, two-year term.
Are we gonna make motions, or are we gonna make nominations?
We're gonna make nominations.
Well, nominations.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Then how are we gonna determine, how are we gonna determine two-year term or one-year term?
Guess we can, everyone has a vote for each board, for each assignment.
Okay.
Do you have a recommendation?
I'm good with those two names.
Okay. Larry Balkum, two-year term, if you vote for Larry Balkum, please raise your hand. Two-year term.
I'm not sure I understand. How are you doing that exactly?
There again, how are we determining one year or two year?
What if there were a third nominee? I think that's my question.
Right.
It's gonna come up, Jordan.
I'm not sure. Who knows? Speak up.
Well, let's.
Most votes, yeah, the most votes. Okay, if you're in favor of Larry Balkum, on the...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, is...
You said Larry Balkum, one-year term.
Can I consult with our attorney for one moment?
We can ask the attorney, yes. I don't think we need to table it, Commissioner McIntyre.
Ms. Attorney, how should we exactly handle this per parliamentary procedure? Because it feels like, I mean, I just want to get this right, I don't want anyone to feel like they've been slated.
Right, it may be difficult, because you're not only putting the nominees forward, but you're also setting their terms as well. Rule 31 of our Rules of Procedure said the chairman will open the floor, you can make nominations, and then we'll go through the names in the order of nomination and take a vote. I think if you want to do it with Commissioner Lauter.
Could we, could we do that, as you said, and then go back after we choose?
Right, I think it would, probably the cleanest way, it may take longer, but the cleanest way may be to choose the people, and then once you choose the two people per district, and then go back and choose which one you want to have the two-year term versus the one-year term.
Joseph, you okay with that?
Yeah, I can live with that.
Jean, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so the very first person we're gonna vote on is Larry Balkum, District 1. All in favor of Larry Balkum, please raise your hand.
My hand raised.
I think that's 7-0, okay, so Larry's gonna be on the board. And Commissioner Lauter, who'd you say the second was?
Rick Williams.
Yep. All in favor of Rick Williams, please raise your hand.
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, District 2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in, all in favor of Steve Bradley, raise your hand.
Yep.
I believe that's 7-0. Mike Leighton, raise your hand.
Yep.
That's 7-0. District 3?
West Morgan and Mike Sasser.
Okay, all, any other nominations?
Uh-uh.
Okay, all in favor of Wayne Sasser, please raise your hand.
Yep.
All right, Wes Morgan, raise your hand. That's everybody, okay. District 4?
I'd like to nominate Charles Brown and Kelly Lauter.
Okay, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Greg Underwood.
All right, all in favor of Charles Brown, please raise your hand.
Yep.
Okay, that's 7-0. All in favor of Kelly Lauter, please raise your hand.
Yep.
One, two, three, so that's no good. All in favor of Greg Underwood, raise your hand.
Yep.
That's four. And the only comment I'll make is, we just recently put him on the Stanley Community College Board, and I'm concerned that we are using the same people over and over again.
I would, my statement would be is Kelly Lauter is currently on the Community College Board as well.
District 5?
I'll make a nomination of Ryan McIntyre and Cindy Bean.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, Tiffany Adal and Cindy Bean.
Okay. All right, all in favor of Cindy Bean, please raise your hand.
Yep.
Okay, 7-0. All in favor of Ryan McIntyre, please raise your hand.
Yep.
That's four. Carries four to three. All right, let's go back and let's do the terms. District 1, who do you want to have a one-year term versus a two-year term?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend Larry Balkum for a two, and Rick Williams for a one.
Okay, any other recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, some of my list, you may notice when I first read it out, some of our current board members I had with a one-year term, and I simply did that to make sure that our new board members, they were, got on there and had the time to kind of get some stuff under their feet with some of our existing board members, and then if some of the existing board members want to transition off, then they certainly can. But certainly, I think, any kind of board changing up on there, a couple of the members have certainly served for some time, and I think once in a while, they should rotate off.
Okay. Well, let's vote. Rick Williams, what is the pleasure for a one-year term? Please raise your hand. Three of us, all right. Rick Williams for a two-year term then.
Yep.
Okay, that carries. Rick's a two-year term, so that makes Larry a one-year term. District 2, who would like to have Steve Bradley as a two-year term? Raise your hand.
Yep.
Okay, that's four to three. Mike Leighton's a one-year term. District 3, Wes Morgan, for a two-year term?
Yep.
Okay, that carries. Wayne Sasser for a one-year term. And those one-year term board appointments, they can be nominated again and elected if the board chooses to do so. Okay, two-year term, Charles Brown.
Yep.
Okay, Greg Underwood.
Two-year term, Greg?
Yep. All right, Ryan McIntyre, what's your pleasure for him?
Peter Sasser.
All right, all in favor of Ryan McIntyre, raise your hand.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Cindy Bean would be a one-year term. Ms. Clerk, Ms. Tyler, did you get all that? Okay.
If you didn't, it was the same as the slate that I presented to start with.
Commissioner Burleson, I had a slate also, so ours differed somewhat, so...
Yes, sir, well, just, just...
Just for, just for information, yeah. Okay, and I guess the appointees are Jan Lauter and myself.
We need to make that in the form of a motion, since it's a new board.
You do.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, I move that Jan Lauter and Bill Lawhan remain on the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Jean votes no, so who's gonna vote for Jan and myself? Raise your hand. All right, Jean said no, so it's six to one.
I'll bet aye.
Aye what? I'm giving you a hard time, McIntyre. Okay, he gonna vote yes, all right. Okay. Consent agenda, with the changes of the minutes, I think everybody's had time to look over it.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner McIntyre. All right. He's at the beach, what you talking about? Do we have a second?
Second, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Eifert, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Public comments, Commissioner Swain.
No comment this evening.
Commissioner Lauter.
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner McIntyre.
No comment.
Commissioner Burleson.
Mr. Chairman, I may have to have some help from someone, but I wanted to invite everyone out to the Agricivic Days at the Ag Center, but I did not have my flyer with me, and I cannot remember the date.
19th.
19th, I thought it was the 19th, but I didn't want to get quoted wrong, so Leon, hopefully you'll report the 19th Agricivic Days, it was a great event the last couple of years, and hope everyone can come out and support the Friends of the Agricivic Center. Thank you.
Just a short one, I think what we did tonight, as far as moving the Agricivic Center arena ahead, was a good deal, not only for Stanley County, but surrounding areas. Look forward to seeing that thing in the near future.
I just concur with what Commissioner Burleson and Eifert just said.
No, sir, thank you.
Didn't know you were gonna be called on so many times tonight, did you? Okay, County Manager Lucas, do you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Tyler. Okay, thank you. I do have one thing, I know this past weekend was the last day the C-130s flew out of Stanley County Airport, which they've been in and out for years. I've enjoyed watching them fly around the county and watching them fly over the lake. I think they're gonna be replaced with C-17s, I'm not sure when that's gonna take place, but a C-17 is a much larger aircraft, and I look forward to those days when we'll start seeing C-17s fly around. No other business, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September the 5th, at 7:00 PM. Yeah, we got Labor Day before, so we're having it September the 5th. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, okay, so all in favor, rise. Thank you.